Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Chaner?
Here.
We stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Budget Beligions, please.
The Budget Beligions to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jennifer McCabe.
Good, very good, thank you.
We have a proclamation that reads, whereas brain injury is a serious public health epidemic affecting at least 5.3 million American livings with long-term disability, and whereas an estimated 2.4 million children and adults in the U.S. sustain a traumatic brain injury and another 795,000 individuals sustain an acquired brain injury from non-traumatic causes each year, and currently more than 3.1 million children and adults in the U.S. live with a lifelong disability as a result of traumatic brain injury. Many of our soldiers have reported symptoms related to concussion and brain injury, including slow thinking, memory loss, sleep disturbance, attention and concentration deficits, and brain injuries, which is a leading cause of disability among soldiers returning to their communities. Whereas a concussion is also a serious brain injury that can occur without loss of consciousness and can occur in any sport, and recognition and proper management of concussions when they first occur can help prevent further injury or even death, and as many as 3.8 million sports and recreation-related concussions occur in the United States each year. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, and behalf of City Council, to hereby proclaim March 2020 as National Brain Injury Awareness Month in Sioux City, and encourage all our citizens to enhance public awareness of traumatic brain injury and salute the mission of the Brain Injury Association of Iowa. I'd like to present this to you and say a few words if you would.
Well, thank you very much. Opportunities Unlimited has been providing services in the Siouxland community for over 25 years. We were founded by a number of local families who had had children with brain injuries, and we are a mission-based organization who serves over 200 individuals each year. Committed to brain injury and other special needs, we work diligently to provide excellent rehabilitation and residential services in our nine homes, which are located on the north side of Sioux City. Last year, we opened a new line of service called Community-Based Neuro-Behavioral Rehabilitation Services. This has allowed us to further support the continuum of care and provide a need of brain injury services within the state of Iowa. In effort to promote awareness and prevention, we also have created a program called Got a Brain, Get a Helmet. This is something that we have created our own curriculum, and it's a program that has shared with local schools and second graders here in Sioux City. We follow up the educational piece with an assembly, and through a grant funded by Dairy Queen both last year and again this year, we're going to be able to provide helmets to every single second grader in Siouxland. Last year, we provided over 1,300 helmets in our district. We're really proud of the work that our organization provides and the difference that we make. We're grateful to have the support of so many within our community. We also provide home and community-based services to children and adults with special needs. These are offered at OU and throughout the community and in the privacy of individuals' homes. We also have two waiver homes where we serve an additional eight individuals from our community. Again, we want to thank the council for your acknowledgement for Brain Injury Awareness Month. It's nice to know that right here in our community, there is a place that excels in the care of individuals with brain injuries. Nobody ever plans to wake up and to experience a brain injury. So again, we know that this can happen, and we're glad that we're able to provide this needed services, service to individuals in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. We appreciate it. Okay, well, we'll go to interviews for City Council, appointed boards of commissions, and finished Civil Service Commission, Michael McLennan. Michael, are you here? Come to the microphone, please, and state your qualifications to serve. How's that sound?
Hi, I'm Michael McLennan. I guess my qualifications, I've been a civil service employee for, or was a civil service employee for almost 35 years. I understand the process somewhat from that side. I'm not going to say I'm an expert on it. And I just want to keep serving the city if I can in whatever ways I can. I think it's an important commission that has a lot of responsibility, and I think I could do a good job helping them.
Questions?
Mike, I know that, I agree with you that it is a very important position. I'm the council's representative on the Civil Service Commission and go to all of their meetings and been doing it for the last six years, but I have been asked by at least one member of the commission and as, as an effort to identify, I know that how serious you are about attending meetings. I know that's one of the questions, and you said, yes, you won't have any problems getting to the meetings, but I want to emphasize how important the Civil Service Commission is and how they, you know, they're, they're used to identify eligible applicants for city employment, to do personnel issues, to do testing issues. And, and I can tell you, in six years, and for the council's information, I have yet to see a full Civil Service Commission adjourned for a meeting yet. There's always something going on, and, and it's, it's a challenge for them to keep up. So I'm just asking, I want to make sure you're aware of what you're getting into because it's one of the commissions that really keeps very active. They all do, but this one really works a little bit more, it seems to me. And I just want to make sure, again, that you know and you're willing to serve and you'll be there in attendance at meetings.
I will, I will make every effort to attend every meeting that they have. I'm not going to say I'm going to be there 100%.
No.
I'd be foolish for saying that.
Yep, I wouldn't want you to, but I-
I would make every effort to be there.
Yeah, more than anything else, I just want to make sure that applicants understand how important this commission really is. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your interest.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Next is Chase Stockton, Tourism. Well, I guess events facility, you're pretty much in charge of tourism now.
Was Dwight yours?
He's going to reschedule.
Yes. I didn't see that.
Or no, he asked to have his application withdrawn.
Right, I'm sorry. Dwight did?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Yep, my name is Chase Stockton. I am currently Director of Sales over at the Stony Creek Hotel and Conference Center in Sioux City, lifelong Siouxlander, and been around, like I say, the business side of Sioux City for quite a while, between commercial print over at the casino and now in the hospitality industry. The opportunity to be on a board such as this, that being that we're neighbors with the Tyson Event Center and that the city of Sioux City with the new hotels going up, I think the common misunderstanding is we have a bunch of hotels, but when it comes to citywide events, we need everyone to work together to bring these big city events to the city. And so I'm hoping that I can come on and hopefully have some good insight to contribute to the group.
Thanks for making some applications. For someone to step, it's really not the Tourism Advisory Board.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure he understands, this is for the facilities, this is not for tourism. We're setting up an entirely different tourism board.
Correct, yeah, just so you know, those are two different ones. Right now, there's a regional tourism board that has representatives with hospitality and things like that. The one that you applied for does have that branch as well. It just coordinates efforts and works with the properties that the city owns, talking about advice, coordinating schedules, working on things, improving how we can make the best of our, our facilities. Sure thing, and it oversees, doesn't it also provide back and input to the actual- Yep. Okay. You're exactly right. Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move to the agenda today. Consent agenda today is items three through 10H. Consider these items to pass unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on one of these items or any item on the agenda, please come up as I read that number, state your name and address so it can be recorded, and if you want to come up under something not on the agenda, come up under Citizen Concerns, and again, please state your name and address. I'll move the consent agenda second. Three is reading of the City Council minutes of February 24, 2020. Four is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in downtown area March 9th and 10th for the Orpheum Symphony Kids Concert. Five is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the Downer Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Koskovich and Murphy Development, and scheduling a hearing. The property is 5304 Al Haynes Drive. Six is a resolution fixing the amount to be assessed against private property for the weed abatement program. Seven is actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a grant agreement with HUD for the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. B is a resolution approving a work order for RSNH for assistance with the North Ramp Hanger Development Grant Application. A are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the Leach Avenue Reconstruction and Ingleside Avenue Reconstruction Projects. B is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Strong Construction for the Riverside Pool Concrete and Canopy Project. C is a resolution approving an amendment to the consulting services agreement with certified testing for the Military Road Reconstruction and Bridge Rehabilitation Project. D is resolution approving an assignment and assumption of agreements between Merge and Urban 1220. Marty, why would, why would they not accept the recommendation of the city attorney? I kind of have to agree with the city attorney. We, we make a deal with the group, and then I understand why the group would want to change that, but then you're, you're basically going with a shell corporation. You have no guarantee they're going to build, but you've got all these incentives out there. So they can transfer that to anybody.
Well, they're transferring it to a related, a related group.
We made this, we made this deal based upon a company that we know a little bit about. I mean, I understand why they want to do it that way, but I'm not sure that that's in the best interest of the city.
Well, I, I guess it's the same developer, basically. They, they set up a tip-
Marty, you're smart enough to know one company's got assets, one company doesn't. There's a big difference. I understand what you're saying, but don't, don't try to tell me they're the same, because they're not.
So they're, they're not, this has the investors in, and we had long discussions with their attorney and our attorneys, and we've, they're telling us the financing that they have and the investors that they have are preferring to do it this way, and we think any city risk is pretty minimal. We're not selling the land, and our primary involvement here is on rebates. We do have a reimbursement from brownfield funds, but that only happens after the building is constructed, so it was pretty minimal.
Have they shown you, have they secured financing for the project? Have they shown you they have bona fide, secure financing for the project?
Chris, you want to answer that?
No, I, I haven't seen that they have-
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that have helped satisfy your legal department's concern? If they would have seen that? I mean, would mine, if I knew they had a bank financing that was signed off on?
And I will point out that the provision in question, which states without relieving assigners from liability under either agreement, is actually still in the agreement that was executed and presented to council. So I think we need some clarification. The legal department's recommendation is that be the version that is approved by council, and that's the version that's before council. So if there's a request to remove that language, that would have to occur on the floor today.
That's not what they understand.
Signed agreement that was presented still includes the language that legal would like to see.
They haven't signed it.
They've signed it.
They signed it?
They signed it. They signed it and returned it and requested that we consider removing the language, which legal did not agree with.
So is that going to kill the deal?
They had signed it and sent it to us with that language still in there, hoping that we, that if council approved removing the language, that, that then we could, we could use that to-
Well, I guess I'd be inclined to remove it once we see that they actually have the project financed down the road. You can approve it today and you can bring it back later.
We could amend it at that point.
Right.
We, we can, we can request proof of financing. They've, they've told us that they have their investors secured and-
I'm sure they do, but I want to-
Okay.
I just want to see it.
Sure.
I don't know if the rest of you, if you're okay with it and remove it today.
No, I'm seeing that.
Okay, tell them, alls we want to do is make sure they're ready to go and they got it ready to shovel in the ground.
And Marty, one other thing while we're on this item too, if you can encourage the developers to talk to area property owners, I know specifically across the street, some individuals were reaching out to me, just asking about the parking and what they thought that was going to look like. They're just concerned about their clientele as well.
I understand. Actually, last week, and Jeff was involved in this, and I attended this meeting, they sent like a whole team of people here, their architect, planner, landscape architect, whole team of people, to review the site plan ahead of the DRC.
Right.
And there, we discussed the parking issue and what they would have to do to show that there's adequate parking in the area.
Yeah, oh yeah.
They're very willing to-
Jeff and I had talked about that.
They're planning on talking to the people in the area and maybe securing some other parking as part of that. So we had quite an extensive discussion about that with their, their team, I guess. They sent a whole bunch of people.
Yeah, that, that's great. I had, I had heard from this person at Innovation Market, actually, so it's been a little while, so maybe they've been contacted.
Right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Nine are applications for beer liquor license, see the list come forward. Ten, receipt of minutes, see the list come forward. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes 5011s and ordinance rezoning 4001 and 4003 Military Road, petitioner Al Fagan. PNZ recommends approval. First consideration approved February 24, 2020. Staff recommends approving second reading only. I'll move that second.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. Unfortunately, the petitioner, the property owner, and the surveyor were not able to make today's meeting. We did have a follow-up meeting since our last, first reading occurred last week. If I can have the screen turned on Lisa quick, I just want to show that there's progress being made. The surveyor has gone out to the site and has completed some topo work to show the drainage in the corner. And I can- This is existing topo to show how the drainage currently flows in the, what I'll call the northeast quarter of the subdivision in question. It's the southwest corner of the intersection of West 30th and Hale Street running to the north. This is what's considered to be Bennington Road as it goes to the west as well. So they have gone out, done some initial investigation on stormwater flow to show that it does flow into that ditch. We're still working out other issues as far as stormwater on the individual sites. We're still working out access agreements. So at this time, we'd only recommend second reading and allow us to continue to make some progress with the property owner.
Anyone want to be heard? Come on up, state your name and address, please.
Jeremy Kleinschmidt, 4,000 Bennington Road. So it flows to the ditch now, correct?
Correct.
So when you put that road in off of 30th to come to into that drainage ditch, where is that water going to go when you create that dam?
And I think that still needs to be worked out in the design of the potential driveway, and it would come along with the building permit. As you can see here, the south side of that road's approximately 1282. As it comes through here, it's 1280, and it drains out underneath the road at 1276. So I would agree with you, as this driveway is constructed, he currently has the existing entrance shown. If there's any type of infrastructure installed there as far as culverts, piping, whatever it may be, they would have to engineer and review that here internally to make sure that it doesn't impact any adjacent property owners as well as affecting that street. They would continue to have that flow going to this ditch, which we saw earlier. But right now, we're in the plating rezoning process. The driveway has not been engineered, so that would come at a later date.
So if, when that property gets sold, am I right on saying you don't have to have a grading permit for a residential lot? Or do you have to have a grading permit for a residential lot?
You do not, a grading permit is issued with the building permit when it's pulled. If they do any additional grading before the building permit's pulled, then they would need a separate grading permit.
Okay, so typically when the grading, or when the permit's pulled, you're going to do grading for the driveway and stuff. Who's to say they're not going to take that 1280 and go to 1282?
And block the water? Yeah, and block the water since-
There's nothing in writing saying that's going to do that. When that happens, you're, the guy that, Mike Rubel, that's on the other side of 30th, is going to get water in his basement, period. The road already slopes to there.
It does slightly, correct. It slopes to the north today.
Slightly, I mean, it slopes.
Yeah.
Water's going to follow that, no matter if it's slightly or major.
Again, at the time of the submittal for the building permit and the driveway design, we would want to review that to ensure there's no impacts to adjacent property owners. That's all I can say at this time. Without having a design in front of us with a driveway, I can't say how they will impact that water flow.
And so what he's asking is when would we be able to look at that? You know what I mean? Before moving forward? What could we do to reassure him that once the property is sold, that they are going to make those changes?
The only thing I could say is we could put some contingency on it that the next time it's reviewed at the plat stage, which would be, you know, next week, I doubt they would have time to design a driveway, but if they could design us a driveway to show that the stormwater flow is not being changed in any direction and included on a plat, that would be the only assurance we have. But until then, we wouldn't see that until we have a building permit.
And then also the 12, 1276-5, who's to say that, that homeowner that bought that lot isn't going to, you know, potentially, if they build that up for the driveway, is going to potentially fill that up halfway? I'm saying with the rain we have in the spring, the guy that's on the downhill side of it is here, and it, they're maxed out as far as the rainwater it can hold right now. He will have water in his basement. Last spring, he had water in his basement. So why would we approve it to go to the next hearing when we don't even, I mean, have information of what, what are we going to do to prevent it? What are we going to do when the landowner buys that land and doesn't need a grading permit and does all that work?
You need, but, but we can put that contingency on there. The problem is, we can't say what it's going to be until we see what it's going to be. So we can put that contingency on there, and from my vantage point, I'm not all excited about this, so don't misunderstand what I'm saying, but you can require a detention pond down below as part of the building permit to stop that. And I'm not as concerned up above as I probably should be, because it still looks like if you did this right, you could put a covert underneath there and it could still flow out and back around, it would seem to me, on that driveway, but-
Just with the lay of the land, putting a covert, great idea, but you'd have to have a pretty substantial size of one to make it work without it being, I mean, it's-
I, I get that, but it can be done. I'm just saying that that part's not, up above is not as big a concern as if they change that grade, because it is pretty flat there. And so if you change that at all, it's going to go the other way. And I don't, this is, to me, there's some lots that shouldn't be developed, and I hate to say that, because I, we need developable lots, but this one just, it's hard to, but I'm willing to go until we see what process is, where they're going to put, I don't even know how they're going to grade the road to the other lot.
Or where?
Or where? I mean, it would seem to me, the further off the road you make that road, the better off you are, because it gives more internal storage of water on their lot rather than up above on the street. I mean, at this stage, I have a hard time believing that the engineer hasn't thought about what the road ought to look like. I'm sorry, but I'm just not buying that. I don't know why we don't have a road layout yet. Working on that as well?
They are working on that as well. So the second hearing, again, would only be for item number 11, the rezoning. Item 12, we're working-
I understand that, Jeff, but it's all tied together to me. I know what the attorney's going to tell me, we can't talk about and all that stuff, but you know what? You're asking neighbors to agree to something that, and quite frankly, I'm a little disappointed the developer couldn't send one representative here today. So he's not showing a lot of interest in this thing either, if that's the case, or he just thinks he's got it through the city council, maybe he does.
I'm, I'm all for building.
Just want to make sure the drainage is addressed.
I agree 100% with Scott.
Yeah, you just want to make sure the drainage-
Yeah, well, I don't-
Gets addressed properly.
Right now, one, one neighbor gets water in his basement, the other guy is real close to it, and I, from my experience, you do what we're doing, or plan to do, two neighbors will have water in their basements, for sure.
Well, I think anything can be engineered, but you got to know what that engineer looks like, so.
Right.
So is there a way, Jeff, I mean, we could pass the second, but then if we're not convinced in the third, then we can defer it, or?
Exactly.
I mean, that's what, does that make sense? It's like, we can approve it, and if they don't come back and meet your, satisfy your demands, or what we're looking for, or what any of us voting are for, then we can defer the item, and look, you have to do more engineering, you're going to have to show us what that, and convince the neighbors as well as the council that we're not going to have water in their basement. You know what I mean? At least then it buys time.
I agree with you, but I think something should have been done already prior to this, to this stage of the game, of their, what, what are, what are they going to do to prevent it?
Oh, they're, they're not going to get third reading, that's what they're going to do.
Right, I'm just, and I agree, someone should have been here to ask questions as well.
All right, anyone else be heard?
I'm Edward Knapp, and I live at 2907 Alaska Street. And you all remember what happened last March with the frozen ground and the snow and the rainfall? Well, what happened there was the water came down, and there was, in behind my house there, they've got that terraced up, and that's come, water comes in there from three sides, and it all enters right there, and it hits that road at West 30th Street there, and it comes around the road ditch and comes down my, in front of my yard, and that road ditch is, right now is like three foot or four, five foot wide and probably three or four foot deep, and it filled that up. And then the only other problem that you had is once the water came around and came down with the driveways there going down Alaska Street, create, created another natural dam, so all that water backed up on Alaska Street. So Alaska Street became a river, and then it backed up into my yard, and that's when I got the water. So even if you settle the problem there at that corner, you still got the problem to get the water away down to Military. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jim Billsland, 2924 Alaska Street. I've got a picture I'd like to show you here.
Turn the light on, Jeff. See the focus on, there's the big buttons there.
This is right in front of my house in the middle of the main block of Alaska Street. That's what it looked like 24 hours ago, that it doesn't handle traffic real well. Most of the, there's two roads to get there, one on each side of my block. The other side, the other road has tighter corners, and there's one stretch of it about a block long that's too narrow for two vehicles to meet, so anybody that learns the road will take the wider road here. There's two culverts within a block of that spot we're talking about at the beginning of the road there, and the culverts are not large enough to handle any increased water. Water often runs over the driveways, and so more water would pretty much wash out their driveway, so that's, that won't work very well as issued. And on the, where this water begins to come out onto the road, there's no ditches on the north side of it, so all the water will have to stay in the ditch that's there, the one on the south side of the road, and it's probably more water than we can handle. That's all.
Anyone else?
Hey, Jeff, I'm just curious, at what point does the maintenance plan, you recommended approval of a maintenance plan, proper maintenance plan for that area, at what point does that get worked into this? Will that have an impact on the road this gentleman just talked about?
The, the area that we're discussing on the maintenance plan is what's referred- The, the area that we're discussing on the maintenance plan is what's referred to as Bennington Road, which is a continuation of West thirtieth street further to the west and it works its way to the north, traveling this way and it accesses several other properties to the northwest. That is the road segment that, as you recall, in the early eighties, there was a resolution passed by council that removed all maintenance from that road other than snow removal. So we're just discussing a maintenance program from here further on. I believe those photos that he's showing is on the existing gravel streets that are already maintained by the city. Right now, this section of road is not being maintained by the city at all.
And that's the location of the picture we just saw?
Uh, that would, I believe, that was to the east.
We are maintaining that road then?
My understanding, that's all been maintained by.
No, apparently not.
Mayor, I, I, without the petitioner or the petitioner's agent being here and with the comments, the adjacent property owners have made, I, I would prefer that we defer this for one week and not even do the second reading. I just think there are a lot of questions that are still raised that need to be addressed. So I would, I would move that we defer item eleven, second reading until March nine.
You have a motion on the floor already, so.
Make a motion to amend?
Withdraw the, her motion.
Can't table it with a motion, can I?
I'll move to, I mean, I'll accept that, I'll accept the withdrawal of whoever seconded it will.
I'm not sure. I wouldn't accept that. So I would withdraw. Either way, give us more time.
Then I'll make the motion, yes.
Made the motion, okay.
I'll make the motion to defer till March nine.
And Alex seconded that.
Okay, gotcha. Waters?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Scott?
I'll go ahead and vote aye. I'm probably not inclined to vote for this until we have a lot more answers and I don't think we're going to get those, but we'll see. Twelve is resolution approving the final.
Thanks for coming again.
Petitioners out begging, and he recommends to defer it from January twenty-seventh, February tenth and the twenty-fourth, and I'll move we defer till the ninth.
Second.
May use your voting panels.
So sorry to make you come back another week, but no action will be taken.
Well, it would be nice if they had some drawings.
Pass five to zero. Thirteen's a hearing and resolution assess, assessing a three hundred dollar civil penalty against Vi E. Siggs and vape lounge thirty-one thirty-four Floyd Boulevard for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. I'll move that.
Second.
The public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to be heard? If so, please come to the microphone. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Sitting next to Pete's starting to rub off on you. Passes five zero. Fourteen's a hearing resolution on the issuance of geo bonds not to exceed fourteen million. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? The hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. I want everybody to understand, I don't, I wouldn't do it this way. We haven't for years, but the legal department now makes us do it, so it takes a little longer, but that's okay. We're doing it the right way now. Passes five zero. Fifteen's a hearing resolution on the issuance of geo bonds not to exceed nine and a half million dollars. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing's now open. Anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. You do so smoothly. A lot smoother when we didn't have to do all this. Passes five zero. Sixteen's a hearing resolution on the issuance of geo bonds not to exceed a million dollars. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open. Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Seventeen's a hearing resolution on the issuance of geo bonds not to exceed one million dollars. I'm, I'll move that. Hearing's now open. Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Eighteen's a hearing resolution on the issuance of geo bonds not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? The hearing is now open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Um, one moment, please. There you go. You may vote.
Passes five zero. Nineteen's a hearing resolution on the issuance of geo bonds not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open. Anyone want to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty's a hearing resolution bonds on the issuance of geo bonds not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open. Anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero. Twenty-one's a resolution authorizing the issuance of twenty-four million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of geo bonds. I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero. Twenty-two is a motion authorizing the redesign of Swift Avenue and connect, in conjunction with the South Fairmont Street reconstruction project. I'll move it.
Second.
All right. People here want to hear all about your project there, so.
Gordon Ferris, city engineer. For you today is our redesign of Fairmont from Transit Avenue to Vine. This is our reconstruction where we're going to replace all of the concrete, all of the paving, all of the sewer, water and sewer storm. Scenario photo for you, see what it looks like. Uh, something that we haven't come across before or in a while, that the K value or our site distance for the intersection of Peters and Fairmont, which is down there at the bottom of the screen that you can see, that the K value is at two. It's just a measure of the vertical curvature of the hill. And we need to raise that up to the actual design, which is twelve, currently it's two. And we'd like to get it up near twelve, which is what is, would the design standard would be. But the best we can do at this point would be getting it up to about seven, seven point two. That point. If we increase, we raise the road up a little bit, but in order to do that, let's go to the next slide. We'd like to abandon the portion of Swift Avenue between the alley and Fairmont. There's, there's no, there's no utilities in there, very low usage. And we'd make a hammerhead type of cul-de-sac, if you, if you will, right there at that alley. In order to raise that road, go to the next slide, right there, we're going to add about four and a half feet of fill on that street to bring the elevation up, so it'll increase the value, uh, the K value for our site distance. It's all for safety mainly, so go back. It would start right around the crest of the hill, which is at Peters in Fairmont, extend north for, and it'd be raised up about four and a half feet and then it would taper off to about the top of that aerial right there, down to nothing. The only properties it would affect, well, it doesn't really affect any of them, uh, for the elevation change. Can you go to the aerials? Or not the aerial, but the, the next few pictures. Next one. Right there, as you can see, that's looking from Swift, looking south. It's about two, it's right there at the intersection. The street is our, the property on the east side, which is on your left, that one's already higher, so it won't affect that one at all. The one on the west, it will slope down, but they'll get their access off of that cul-de-sac, if you will.
No, let him finish his presentation first.
That's what we're presenting to you there. We've got a few other photos. You can go back one. This is at the intersection of Peters. And you can see that the site distance is not excellent there. You have to really pull out into, on Peters, you have to pull out into the intersection so that you can see that you have clearance. That will increase the safety of anybody crossing there at Peters if we remove the Swift intersection.
Say that part again, or you repeat it?
When you're, when you're, anybody's crossing on Peters, crossing, uh, Fairmont on Peters, when there's less chance of someone pulling out on Swift, when anybody's coming across Fairmont, there'll be less chance of any kind of.
I gotta give my bearings. Where's Robert Stadium? Back this way, right?
Yeah, it's behind us on that.
Yep, I know where you're at. Okay. And.
That's, that's looking south, going up, looking up to Peters intersection from Swift.
So it'd be to your left and forward more is the stadium?
Oh, the stadium, yes.
He was just, yeah.
Yes, at Peters you would. You'd take the left and go to the stadium. Right, go to the next slide. This is looking north, about the same distance, um, up to Peters intersection. It's just to kind of give you some perspective on how much of a blind hill.
But I'm guessing that this is all over Sioux City.
Yeah, this is. We're just, we're, we, in order, for the funding that we get for this project.
Where are we getting the funding?
From the state, swap, these are swap dollars through the feds. So we, we're mandated to actually make some improvements other than just resurfacing a new, new utilities. We want to make sure that we can make improvements on this intersection. I'm sorry, what?
How much, how many dollars in federal funds are you getting?
I'm sorry, this is Nate Wing. He's one of the engineers.
One block stretch is a million, too?
It's about four blocks and it's about, I misspoke before, one point eight million, I think is about the estimate for a two and a half million dollar project total.
I try, yeah, I try.
My whole life, I never remember that intersection being a problem back when I was a kid, but things must have changed since I was fifteen, three years ago when I delivered pizzas for.
Can I jump? That's probably one of the most dangerous ones, Mr. Yes, because I live right.
Gordon?
Yeah, you do.
Gordon, could you go back to the map?
Yes.
Could you go back to the map for?
Is this yours, the railroad type? I've been up to your place, yeah.
This one?
Yeah, yes. You, you talked about four and a half feet. Where, where are you raising that four and a half feet again?
Right there from, uh, I would say halfway between Peters and Swift, it'll be peeking out there about four and a half feet higher.
Red box, Gordon?
What's that?
In the red box?
No, 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 that red box is actually the part that we will vacate.
Vacate.
Oh, okay.
It's in the gray.
It's in the gray then? You're talking about the street in the gray then?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
No, where's the four and a half feet, right?
Right here. The area, uh, no, the profile.
No, mayor.
Right there. If you look at this profile right here, if you look at the profile, right there at the very top of that hill, or that, that line, that's Peters. As you're going to the right, you're going north to Vine. On Fairmont. This is the center line of Fairmont.
Hey, but go back, please, to the.
It's on the gray, right?
Can you just point out, do you have the little?
Mouse?
The mouse, you can just point out where the four and a half?
Yeah, right there. So the thickest area where we'll add that four and a half foot of fill will be right about where that South Fairmont Street label is in that vicinity.
This is being shopping center.
Correct.
So it's South Fairmont Street that's going the four and a half feet?
Correct, and the reason. And we want to eliminate the intersection with Swift because if we raise Fairmont up quite a bit, the intersection with Swift will become more unsafe.
We'll have to.
Site distance.
Well, four and a half feet, yeah, all the way, it's four and a half feet?
Uh, well, it tapers, it's gradual, but at its thickest, it's four and a half foot.
Right there at Swift, it's around two and a half to three feet. If we do that, then we're going to have to rebuild, uh, what is it, about a hundred and fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet? We're gonna have to.
We're making it less steep.
It's about a hundred and fifty feet.
Less of a dip.
Not vacate Swift and with the elevation changes, uh, at Swift, you would have to reflect about a hundred and fifty back to the west of Swift Avenue.
Are you rebuilding Swift anyway or just closing it completely?
Closing it and removing that concrete and making that what you call a hammerhead. So people can still have access on the alleys, both north and south.
Like a little inlet or driveway.
And that'll actually make.
It'll be a, it'll be a, like a cul-de-sac that fire trucks will never get around, but that's okay. Gordon doesn't care about those guys, so.
They'd still be able to act.
It's a hammerhead. They, they could turn in and back in.
Those big fire trucks in a call, in a hammerhead, I guarantee you.
No, but I meant, it's half a block. You would pull in if you needed to or just alongside the house on either Fairmont or Lynn.
Just before we get going.
My name's Ray Bennett. I own the property at fourteen nineteen South Fairmont.
Address, please.
Pardon me?
Address, please.
Home address, twenty-one oh five South Lemon.
Thank you.
I own the property at fourteen nineteen and these gentlemen are property owners above the hill. Now, if he's going to take out Swift Street, you can make a cul-de-sac at the alley. You're going to build it up four and a half feet, four feet, you say the, the dirt on the side to keep Fairmont go like this. What are you going to do about the properties running, uh, on the flat land down there, you know, on Fairmont, say the corner, let's say from Swift Street north?
Yeah, you're, the property.
Yeah.
Right at the top. We're going to go to the Google map.
Person on the corner and mine second and, and he's third, then there's a, there's a ditch there, uh, sewer, whatever you want to call it. It's been a little waterway. That's it.
That one.
Now, what are they going to do with the streets from here? Are you going to raise this up too?
This will be raised up just a, a little bit, notch, notch there, maybe a one of.
By this point, right about where the cursor is now, we are actually.
Okay, because we've had that property for fifty years. See, my dad had that in nineteen seventy and used it for.
What was your problem?
The property, we've had that property for over fifty years and we never had any problems with it. Now they're going to tear ours. We thought that you're going to tear up Swift Street and sell it to somebody to build something there, but that's not the case.
No, no, we are, if, if this is approved, we will vacate that street, that portion and make that property sellable.
Sellable. Okay.
Well, I can't make someone build on it.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, we're not seeking out anyone to build it.
No, no, that's what I meant. That's what I thought. Maybe somebody said, okay, we're going to have somebody come in there and build something there. But I thought that whole place, that whole alley up in there was all grandfathered, or, I'm sorry, back across the street at fourteen something, we had a property there and, and another person owns it and it's like light commercial.
On the other side?
Yes. Now, he's got sidewalks there. Now, he's going to have, propose to have sidewalks on his side of the street, right?
Yep. We're, no, we're going to have sidewalk. We're putting sidewalks in.
Just on one side?
Just on the one side.
Okay.
Because up the street, on the other side, there's a big gully.
Yeah.
And we're not, we can't put a sidewalk there without doing some major improvements.
I just wonder if it'll take away from the, the drainage and everything if you build up Fairmont Street to our properties, you know what I mean? And the guy on a corner and me and, yeah, you know, see how broke up the street is, but that's not the point we're talking about. Is that if you raise it up from Swift Street up, okay, so it's going to be steeper there, right?
It's going to be the same grade, approximately the same grade. What, what the proposed design is, it's taking the curve at Peters that's now about forty foot in length and lengthening it out to a hundred and fifty to increase the site distance as you're coming over.
Now, are you flattening the intersection?
And it, it's lengthening the vertical curve.
Instead of going like this, you're going to gradual?
Yes.
Kind of, yes.
We're not lowering Peters intersection.
Okay.
And up the street to help match.
That's what I wondered about, because I know. That's what I wondered about, 'cause I know, I was born and raised in that neighborhood, and people used to fly over the top of that hill.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they, they still do.
And they still do.
Hopefully, this'll take that away.
Come on up the microphone, though, so that we can record, okay? That's okay.
Okay, that's what I just wondered about, see, nobody said in this proposal, let's say here, you know, to vacate Swift Street, and there was no explanation on, on the, raising it up or anything like that. So, that's my question, and the guy across the alley there, or street, he was asking the same thing, but he had to go somewhere. And, you know, he said, okay, we have access, you're gonna put a turnaround in that alley, I'm sorry, in the,
Swift.
Be the west side of Swift, or just a short wall?
It'll be like a cul-de-sac.
That's a circle, got it.
Well, a hammerhead's a little out, out of, it's not quite a perfect circle, but that'll be that.
All right. Okay. All right, and all, all the grading, it'll be all up to coast, you know what I mean by that, got it, all right. We just wondered about it, 'cause we didn't get any information on what you guys were gonna do, and they're gonna trans, keep on going to transit then, right, from there?
Oh, from Vine to Transit, yes.
They're gonna take all that out? You're gonna take Fairmont from Vine to Transit out and redo everything?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Okay.
Come on up.
Thank you.
Sir, and if your neighbor that wasn't able to be here has any questions, he can contact.
That's why he told me to ask about his property across the street, see, and I go, okay.
And if he has more questions, city staff can answer.
Is he the one that owns the garage?
Huh?
Is he the one that owns that garage?
Right.
His property, yeah, he'll still have a driveway, we're putting in a driveway.
That's what I meant, too, he says, yeah, I wonder if they'll block up my driveway, see, he's got the cutout for the driveway, it's pretty construction.
That'll probably move down just a little bit, or up.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Come on up, if you wanna talk.
Now you can come up, sir.
Anyway, can you show me?
You just needed an address.
Name and address again, please, if you would.
Uh, mine's twenty-six twenty-three Peters Avenue, I'm right on the corner.
Name?
Newman, Garrett.
Thank you, I just needed for follow-up, I think.
No, that's fine, yeah.
Which one's yours?
That's mine, right there.
That one right there.
Yeah, anyway, since you got the pictures up, 'cause it'll remind me what, you know, what I wanna talk about here, are they gonna remove the telephone pole? Since they're gonna be, 'cause on here, it looks like they're gonna be rounding the corners off.
We are gonna round the corners off, it will have to be moved a little bit, I think.
A little bit, you mean, they, they take all them wires and all?
No, they'll move the pole, which way is the pole moving, to the east, I'm sorry, the west or the north?
We haven't had those discussions with.
I would say it'd have to be west, 'cause there's really no place to move it east, I mean, that's probably only about two feet.
It's not gonna move east, it's either gonna move west or north a little bit.
Oh, west or, oh, western.
Right in the middle of your driveway that you thought was yours.
What's that?
You thought it was your driveway?
Well, I just, you know, according to this, it does say on here that it is in conflict, it says my driveway's in conflict, and that's why I'm wondering about how wide they're gonna make the corner.
This is your parking area?
This is my parking right there.
It's not your driveway, this is.
No, my driveway's on the other side.
Right.
That's just kind of a private parking I have right there.
Right, so that's gonna be, we are gonna have to move that over a little bit.
Okay, move what over now?
We're going to be putting the sidewalk ramps, right there.
Sidewalk what?
Ramps.
Oh, you mean the little yellow things that you?
Yeah, the yellow domes.
Oh, they'll be sitting like right on the corner?
Yes.
Oh.
On both corners.
Even if you don't have a walk?
They're putting a walk in, he's.
Yeah, you're getting a new walk there.
No, you're not.
No, I'm not.
No, 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 no.
That's on the other side of the street.
It's gonna cross here, right there behind that stop sign, gonna cross to right where your pickup is, or near that, and then it's gonna cross Fairmont across the street, and that sidewalk is gonna go up the whole east side of Fairmont.
Is there a way to cross right there on the right, behind the stop sign, instead of going across and across?
Stopping site distance isn't adequate.
Oh, I got you, that makes sense, that, no, 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 no.
Then the person crossing.
You wouldn't see that, it makes sense.
So will that take out part of my cedar fence?
Yes, it will.
This'll fill that part.
How much of it, do you know, I mean, how far we're gonna come in?
No, I, let's see here.
Coming up that hill, going to the south, can you tell me, are they taking any dirt out of there and widening it, or is it just a, or is the street still gonna be the same width? Coming up, coming up the street. Okay, so you're not taking anything off, off the, coming down?
Probably. Actually level, this adding of this fill, will actually level off.
A little bit more, you know what I mean, if you filled in a little bit higher.
Yeah, not, not at this moment. They'll leave the fencing there for you, once it's marked up, well, we're gonna have, once these details are nailed down, if it gets approved by council, we're gonna have a public meeting on this.
Well, his fence is gonna have to go to have a sidewalk there, Gordon.
Yeah, well, just the first couple of.
Yeah. He's gonna lose some sidewalk.
It kinda looked like that, I mean, they're pretty close on the, on the sheet there, I could tell that maybe one or two sections were gonna get, you know, maybe knocked off, but, okay, all right.
So, yeah, and then there will be a public meeting, and they'll show schematics and all of that stuff.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
And that's usually held in the neighborhood, we'll have it at.
I was just wondering how much of it was gonna be shaved off, you know, 'cause I use every bit of it, you know, but even though it is a city, I still use every bit of it.
Yeah, you might have to scoot that, your rocks over.
Yeah.
This is just conceptual at this point, it's not designed yet, so, we didn't wanna go too far down that road until you guys had a chance to.
So in other words, I'll see this again, as far as, do they really get down to the detail of what they're?
Yes, if it gets approved tonight, yes, we're gonna go in more detail.
Okay, and don't forget, this is a, this is a bus route, too, 'cause I drove a city bus, and this was my corner, so the bus is always on that corner, you know? Fairmont, and it's also a city, you know, fire trucks, all that other stuff, and I actually almost got stuck on that hill once, because I, you have to come over the top and sit, because if you rest any further down, you know, like if there's ice or snow, then you have trouble. You know, and me and Billy, we've seen, well, countless accidents on this corner.
And that's what we're trying to improve.
Yes.
The site distance for everything?
A lot of the college kids coming from Morningside, they go over the top of this hill, and they go right through the stop sign, and you got people coming up the north, you know?
Most people's Briar Cliff kids that are coming out to Morningside.
That's what I know.
No, it's a dangerous, it's a dangerous corner.
Morningside kids.
I had a year or two, a college kid went right through the stop sign, and he T-boned our gal and her two kids, and I mean, he hit her right in the driver's side door, and I'm, she's lucky she wasn't killed, 'cause it smashed it all in, she was pretty shook up, the two kids went to the hospital, it is a dangerous corner.
I don't even know why you go straight there.
When, when does this bid?
Uh, hopefully, we're shooting for December.
Okay, so there'll be some meetings in between now and then, anyone else be heard?
Yeah, and maybe this hill, I mean, I can tell with the concrete, where they're kinda cutting it off, that's, Billy lives right on the other corner, on the, the east side, but they could, it probably wouldn't hurt if they could go up a little bit further, as far as the concrete, because it's a pretty bad, I mean, there's potholes, you know, all the way up to the top of the hill, so if they could replace.
Oh, he live, he's got that block wall one?
No, he's got, he's across the street.
Behind us.
He's across the street right there, but if you look at the street, I mean, it's pothole city all the way up until about the top of the hill, so.
In all, in all fairness, they're all filled.
We have a new nickname.
Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Yeah, yep.
Yep, come on up, sir. Well, either.
Oh, that's Billy.
No, yeah, William Majors, fifteen oh six South Fairmont. That's the picture right there. Uh, Peters Street does need some repair, and I would like to see it come up a little higher, like to the, to the crest of the hill, than what was proposed in the paper.
Hey, raising Peters? No, new.
It's the resurfacing.
Oh, oh, okay.
I think, I think there's voids under the street by that telephone pole there in my yard.
They're up there?
Well, we'll send someone out there to look, you know, check it out.
Ground penetrator? Drill a hole?
I don't know what they'll be doing, but, yeah, we'll send someone out there to take a look.
I like, I like the design and the project, so it'll, it'll be better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Skip Schasso, and.
Address, Skip. Address, please.
Uh, fourteen fifty-three South Fairmont.
Thank you.
And fourteen twenty-one South Fairmont. Um, I own the property on both sides of Swift.
Oh. Okay.
And I'm sorry for being late, but I just got off work.
That's okay.
And you may have answered my questions already.
Those two green, green ones?
Yep, right. Uh, and I guess what I'm wondering is, I heard something about they're raising the grade, is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, and how high are you raising the grade?
Uh, on your south property, which is right there where the cursor is, that one's gonna go up about four and a half feet, so it'll go down into your property.
Okay.
And then the south one is probably about a couple of feet.
How much?
Couple of feet, two.
Couple of feet, okay, and then are you taking out Swift Street?
Yes.
And then, what happens to that property that's under Swift?
Well, if, if it all gets approved, we're gonna vacate it, and then we'll be able to sell it.
It would be available for you to purchase.
Okay, so it doesn't get grandfathered into the land rights on the property?
The people that have, the, the people that are on either side have first option to buy.
And it sounds like you're on, yeah, you're on both sides.
That's what I'm saying, so you have option, our city policy is, you have first right of refusal on that.
Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Thanks, yep. Anyone else? Okay, ready to vote?
Yes.
One more question.
Yeah.
Oops.
Come to, come to the microphone, please.
The very center of Fairmont and Peters, will that point stay at that grade, or can that come down half a foot or a foot?
I believe it's staying about the same, isn't it?
It's staying about the same, uh, the grade coming down Peters is too steep to adjust the grade of South Fairmont at the intersection.
Oh, but it affects, negatively affects the other street a little.
Pass is five zero, thank you for, guys for coming.
Thanks.
Uh, twenty-three is a resolution approving an assignment assumption of the master lease for Cedar Rapid Bank and Trust for the Badroe Building, I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? Marty, we still have four or five people interested, when, how soon are we gonna get this bid out so we can get rid of the property?
Closing, which I think is tomorrow?
Any reason we don't have those documents already in the mail? This city attorney?
With the closing, oh, yeah.
No, the documents for a developer, let's, let's don't. You have to do an RFP, you have to do that.
Still have strong interest, so.
What's that?
We still have strong interest in it, so.
Well, let's get an RFP out and get her gone, we don't need to sit on it at all if we don't, for any length of time, so. When can the council expect that RFP to be ready, I guess I'm gonna ask that question to put pressure on you and the legal department.
Weeks, probably too late for next week, but we can do it the week after that.
All right, let's get her done.
Right, Amber?
Send those out without counsel?
Yeah, you can send those out without, you only need us to approve it.
Bring it back to council.
We'll bring it back to council.
Karen Maynard.
Mayor and council, before we go on, if you recall, we'd had an item to hire Hunn and Associates to write the RFP, so that's what will be coming back in two weeks.
Yeah, but bothers me, if we knew that we had title insurance, and we knew we had, we knew we had this thing coming down the pike, we should have already had the agreement ready to go in the mail, the, the citizens are concerned, and rightfully so, what do you buy in the Badroe Building, I've tried to, everyone I've talked to, I've tried to tell them, listen, we've got four or five people that are interested in this project. The way you minimize that fear in this community is to get that agreement out as quick as you can, and get this thing awarded, and get it reconstructed.
But wasn't there concern before, we were going to go forward with it, but it was the cost of the company?
Three weeks ago, we knew that we could get title insurance, we knew we were gonna get possession, we knew all of that three weeks ago, nobody on this council said, we're not gonna do the deal. So now we got some guy that, I still haven't figured out why we're spending twenty-five or thirty thousand bucks with him to do an RFP.
Because of the historic tax credits and stuff?
No, that was the legal that we hired out of Omaha, that was the reason that we hired the Omaha attorney, was to clarify the tax credits, it's entirely different argument. Sorry, Mark, sorry, Alex, but that's not the case.
Well, there, there were a few title issues that came up in the last couple of weeks that caused us to kinda have to wait a little bit.
Once you knew the title insurance was purchased, we said we'll buy the building, so, anyway.
Well, I think we could have, we could have the agreement on for Monday, we have it all done, it's been, it was deleted, so we have it, we could put it right back on.
Well, let's get it on here and get it going.
All right, we, yes, we, we do have that ready to go, so we can bring that back on Monday.
Let's, let's get it out there, and let's see what we get. The vote in?
I think everyone's excited about the project.
The vote's not in.
Now it is.
The discussion wasn't done yet. Help me out, Lisa, the discussion wasn't done yet.
Hey, you weren't the only one.
I was just answering the question.
Pass by zero. Twenty-four is Karen Maynard, of Public Rightofway in relation to city projects and maintenance activities.
Greetings again.
Yes, back again, this one is in relation to the Fairmont project, it brought a little bit to point, uh, to our attention, that there are a lot of improvements in some of these streets that we have here at the city, and I just wanted to go over them, a few of you, with you, so we're all on the same page, and when this does, these do come up, that we're all treating everybody the same, so. But the problem is, we have, a lot of people will put these private improvements in the right-of-way, which they don't realize how far the right-of-way is. A lot of people will think that the right-of-way starts at either the back of the curb, or the back of the sidewalk, that's not always true. Sometimes it projects farther onto the property, onto, I use air quotes, because it's not actually their property, it's the city.
When you do this, I see lots of mailboxes here, are you gonna put them on a corner, then, make them go get their mail, or are you gonna leave the mailboxes?
Only during construction, though, we will replace the mailbox.
Well, sometimes you don't, sometimes you make, you go to a corner box.
Uh, and we, we checked with the post office on that, if they're, they request that, and the neighborhood wants it, we go forward with that. A lot of the mail, the, the fancy type of mailboxes and ornamental ones with all the bricks and everything else, we don't replace those. We give those back to the people, we will replace the mailbox with a standard metal mailbox on a four by four, pressure-treated post, and put that in there. That's all we replace with, that's our standard. Uh, some of the other improvements that we, I just, code on there, uh, this is already in our municipal code, uh, so if we do wanna change it, we'd have to change it all the way down to that. Some of these improvements can be retaining walls, such as this one right here on the corner of Peters and Fairmont. The right-of-way line is actually, as you see in the other picture, it's back, thirteen feet? Yeah, thirteen. Their, their properties, well, that, their, their block wall's like six and a half feet into the right-of-way, and.
So where's the sidewalk, which side's it going?
Uh, the sidewalk's going on both sides of that property. It's, that one's gonna be rebuilt, that you see there, to approximately their fence line, their chain link fence line, and then it'll be, it'll come out because we're widening that radius, and then a sidewalk will be put on their west side of their property.
So are, you're gonna put a retaining wall to hold that dirt from up above?
We will have to put in a small retaining wall on our side to hold that back.
On the west?
On the, on the east side of the sidewalk, which will be on the east side.
Yeah, 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 west side of his property.
Right, west side of his property.
Build a retaining wall, I don't know how else you can do it, so.
Right. Uh, and for instance, on this one here, this improvement, we could make the property owner remove it at their expense, but we will be removing what we need to, to grade that back, so we can improve that site distance, as you can see, stopping right there at that stop sign, you, you can't see very far up the street on Fairmont, which is down the hill. So that'll be graded back, and they'll, they'll, we'll take that block wall out, some of that, not all of it, just to about where that cursor was, go back. Yeah, right around there somewhere.
You think it'll stay up, if you take that wing off of it?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have to tie it back a little bit.
It's dangerous.
But the, the, any remaining brick will, of course, will be for them, that's theirs, unless they want us to remove them.
Gordon, what's your best guess for how long that retaining wall's been there? Gordon, what's your best guess for how long that retaining wall's been there? Just a wild guess. Ten years?
Wouldn't even wanna guess.
Long time?
That's a newer style brick, so...
It is, I'd say about twenty years.
Ten, fifteen years, okay.
It's those stackable ones, landscape ones. It's not from the seventies, that's for sure.
Oh, that's the importance of having neighborhood meetings where you tell them exactly what's gonna happen on their property. We've not been very good about that around here, so...
We are gonna do that with these properties, go to the next slide here. Here's another example on Fairmont that is, we are going to steer clear from this as much as possible on these two properties. Uh, what's that, sixteen oh four and sixteen...
Hundred.
Sixteen hundred. That sixteen hundred one has two tiers of, um, railroad tie walls, as you can see there on the left photo. And they're both in the city right of way.
The lower and the upper?
Upper, yeah, the lower and the upper. And this guy, the, the guy at sixteen oh four has those concrete steps all the way down to the sidewalk. Almost, almost one hundred percent of those stairs are in the city right of way. Again, we have, at this location, we're actually shifting the road to the west just a little bit, so that we don't have to bother with either one of those home improvements. Uh, only because we can. Some locations, we can't, we can't move the street at all, we can't do anything about it. But we are gonna try to avoid doing any kind of improvements on that at all. Some of the, the plants, the course that they have there, in their, in their planter box, we will not be replanting those. Uh, we'll set the grades, and if they want seed, we'll put seed down, as in grass seed. If we have to remove any block walls, or, uh, I'm sorry, retaining walls, those will be graded back, and they'll have to replace the block wall at their expense. This is what our intention is, this is the way we've been doing it. Other things that we are talking about are walkways and carriage, the, the carriage walks and the stairs. Ed, did we have a picture of that? Thought we did. Thought I put one on there. But, uh, those ones are between the sidewalk and the street that lead up to the front door, the house usually, such as those stairs. We're gonna try and match those when they're in the right of way. If we ever have to go onto private property for these improvements, of course, we will fix whatever we have to, or whatever we damage for those. You do? Yeah, throw on a stair picture, 'cause there's a couple, like right there, the stair, that one. That one, we're gonna have to match up. Those stairs, and we'll have to make, do as best we can without rebuilding the whole thing all the way to the house. So, another one there, that one will be fairly...
But they didn't do anything wrong there, that happens all over town. You gotta get to the sidewalk with another sidewalk, and if you have to step it, you gotta step it, so...
We're, we're not saying there's anything wrong with those at all.
I mean, I don't see why this is any different than any other place you've been, the only ever, so...
We're just listing over the different improvements that we are going to replace.
Right, well, you gotta, you gotta match it up, so...
Right. Uh, such as the walkways and carriage walks to the right of way line, uh, stairs to the right of way line as well. Retaining walls will be installed only to accommodate the sidewalks, such as that one on the corner of Peters, and for ADA ramps.
That's a new one, you didn't used to do that. Glen Avenue, you didn't do it until, till we complained dramatically when you left those... So, that, I, I think you have to do that, I, the way we left Glen Avenue at first was just totally unfair, so... That neighbor doesn't want that ADA walk necessarily, if it's gonna tear up his yard, so you should do everything you can to accommodate him.
Mailboxes, again, we talked about that. Landscaping, we will just grade that back and seed it. If they wanna do anything different with trees or plants or decorative stuff, that's on them. And of course, sprinklers, at this point, you know, we don't, we give them warning, cap them off, and we will not replace those. They, they'll bet on their own expense, unless you guys all say otherwise, so... I just wanted to go over those, different improvements, just to make sure we're all on the same page, so when people do come in...
It's just a challenge, yeah, people are gonna be fired up, I understand, but just gotta try to be as equal as we can.
So Gordon, this actual project will take place physically twenty twenty-one this spring?
Yes.
So there'll be one or a series of public meetings so that everyone knows what's going to happen to their property?
Right.
That's great, because it gives them a good year and a half to get ready in their mind.
Yes, we, once we get nailed down the, the property, um, the design, I'm sorry. See that, we're gonna start meeting with some of these homeowners that are affected immensely, like those people on the four corners of Peters. That one's a special case.
Right.
Such as the gentleman that was here parking in the right of way, we'll be meeting with them. The one, his neighbor across the street, who has, uh, his fence will have to be relocated and pulled back, it's quite, it's impeding the site distance quite a bit.
Well, this will give them the chance to plan for what they need to do, if it's a fence or if it's, you know, plants or whatever.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Will still be excited, at least I would be.
New street.
You know where you've had it, no, but where you've had something in place for thirty, forty years, and then you're pulling it back, it's like...
I know.
Come on, Gordon, can't we leave it where it's been for forty years?
I understand.
Why are you taking my decorative mailbox down and replacing it with something that's unsightly and...
That's very...
That's not as bad as when they say they're moving them all to the corner.
Very plain, well, no, but I, I know the complaints you get, and, and some are valid, I mean, you know, you're changing something that's been in place for years, and it's been their home, and now you're putting it on...
That decorative box, you're gonna give it to them?
Yes.
And if they give it back to you, you're gonna install that one back?
If they install that, they'll...
They've gotta install it back.
Oh, they'll have to install it.
They, they can do it on their own dime.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're not...
They have to install it back.
A lot of them are, I don't even think some of those are even legal, the right of way, are they? Yeah, they're not supposed to have some of those. Can you imagine someone hits that with a car?
Well, or a ball bat.
I'm sorry, what?
Or a ball bat.
Right.
A lot of them were put up because of the ball bat, yeah.
Don't do that anymore.
But they're still supposed to be breakable.
We don't do that anymore?
No, I don't.
All other people do, go ahead, Skip.
I guess as long as I'm here, I wanted to, uh, make sure you guys are aware that I also have property on Lynn Street, just south of, uh, Vine. And in that area, there's a, uh, creek that runs through there, and there's a tunnel that goes under the road. Well, the, uh, the road is collapsing. I called the, uh, city about three years ago and talked to the street department and that, and told them that the road was collapsing. Matter of fact, it even has gone down so much it's pulled my sidewalk down, and I had to repair my sidewalk also, it was, so that, uh, it would be in compliance with, uh, the laws here. But, uh, every year, it keeps going down lower, and now it's a big dip. And whenever it rains, if you go and look off to the, uh, west side, you can see, um, water just gushing out from underneath the street, going out there, so you know it's washing out. Eventually, somebody's gonna go over that road, collapse, and fall inside of it, but I just thought I'd bring that to your attention. Like I said, about three years ago, I notified the city, and they haven't done anything about it.
You know what he's talking about?
We'll look into it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Citizen concerns, anyone wanna be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Uh, Keith Baker, Sioux City. I wanna show you guys something, you ever seen these? Huh?
Oh, yeah.
Pretty irritable, aren't they?
No, I played with them all the time as a kid.
Here, you want these, then? Um, I've started dealing with them. The government years ago, when they planted trees out there in Riverside, they planted these damn things. This year's been the worst. I got a guy that bought a house across the street from me, that never maintains his property. They're about two or three inches thick, so when the wind blows, guess who gets them? I do. You guys need to start dealing with this, if you would, I've tried to go through the city, nobody seems to wanna talk to me about it. What are we gonna do? Silence is golden.
I had one, I cut it down myself, and it was on public right of way.
But the, the city planted these. Why don't they have to cut them out?
When did they, when did they plant them?
Huh?
When did they plant?
When the government threw, it threw on all that urban renewal out there. I don't know how many years ago that was.
Well, I can tell you, I was on the council back then, it was in the nineties, but I don't, I don't think we planted trees as part of that project, 'cause we don't plant trees as part of...
You know, if you guys aren't gonna do anything, at least the city could go tell the property owner, clean it up a little bit. I'm tired of dealing with it.
What's the address?
Twenty twenty-three Nash.
Okay, we'll send Daryl out.
I've already got ahold of the city, nobody's ever returned my call, they don't care.
Okay.
I give them a chance to start with, so...
Okay.
So you're saying it's your neighbor's tree that's...
What's that?
The neighbor's tree shedding onto your property?
Well, it's blow, they blow across it. He lives across the street, but when the, and, you know, in his yard, they're about two or three inches thick, all over his yard, it's ridiculous. This guy doesn't maintain anything.
Mm-hmm, and then they blow over to you?
Yeah. And, uh, is what I'm gonna do, I tried to do it today, take my leaf blower and blow them back in his yard. So I don't wanna hear the city come out here, out to my house and says, you can't blow them back across the street. Well, that's where they come from. So I'm gonna give them back to him. It's different than a leaf tree, I understand you can't blow those in the street. Those come out of the trees, but these come out of his trees. So I'm gonna give them back to it. So I don't wanna hear from anybody. Ah, you can do it by me, I, I, I don't care. And if cops come out there and tell me I can't do it, I'm gonna tell them the same thing. They belong to him. I wish somebody would deal with this guy. I'm tired of taking care of him.
Well, I think the mayor's gonna pass the address along.
Also, when I talked to this city, uh, guy, he said, I think they put it in the ordinance. None of these are planted, be planted anymore, because they wanted to put them on West Seventh. And there was another graded tree that had a lot of shedding of this kind of stuff. They said, no, we're not dealing with it anymore in this city. So they must have a clue also. So, let me ask you, if it's into ordinance now, you can't plant these trees anymore, or they won't, are those grandfathered in, or are you guys gonna have to cut them down?
It must be grandfathered in, but I don't know that for a fact. But I like your idea of starting with the maintenance enforcement.
It's all I'm asking.
I know, and we heard you loud and clear, and we've got the address, but I think that's a good start that you're suggesting, and then if we fail there, then what's next? I don't have an answer for you, that's my silence.
Give them back to him.
No, but let's start with the maintenance enforcement, like you suggested.
You know, I've tried, I've called the city.
That was a good idea. Yeah.
Nobody's ever responded to, back to me, yea and nay, or we're not gonna do anything, haven't heard anything, so...
But ti- typically, when something is banned, it's, the, whatever's in existence is grandfathered in typically? Unless it's a danger to your health, safety?
There's another thing.
Welfare?
Out there in Riverside, they just spent over two hundred and fifty thousand cleaning out a storm drain between Nash and up behind the old Come and Go, a great big water, a water main.
Where now Nash and the old Come and Go?
Nash and Paul. Come and Go on the end of West Nineteenth, where it meets Riverside Boulevard.
Okay.
All the way from their, it back edge of their parking lot, clear down to Nash Street.
Okay.
An outfit from Sioux Falls took almost four months cleaning that out. Right now, when they raise the level of Nash Street putting down new blacktop, the storm drains are only about maybe three inches high. There's one across the street from me that's almost plugged with these, and you know where they're going, don't you? They're gonna plug the sewers. Does that make any sense? It doesn't to me.
That's a problem.
And you know, it's, it's like, it's like a sewer pipe in your house, you get one little thing caught in the sewer pipe, it's gonna keep building up and building up and building up. You know a quick way to plug a sewer up? These right here. Something to think about.
Yes, thank you for that.
We'll get up, we'll get somebody out there, see what...
I would appreciate it.
See what we can do.
Well, if you can't do anything, you know...
We'll let you know. Okay, we won't let you know.
You know, I've heard, I've heard that before, Bob, you know, yea or nay, at least you heard something. You know, no response, I, I...
First time I've heard about it, Keith, how do, what do you want me to do, the city manager's gonna respond to you?
Well, you know, people from, let, let me tell you something, Bob. I talked to this street division twice, and they said, well, he's out in the field, and the third gal I talked to said, he's on vacation. So which is it? Is he in town, or isn't he? Reliability, don't you just love it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bradken?
No, sir, thank you.
Julie?
I'm silent today.
We won't be that fortunate on the next guy.
Yeah, I apologize, I tell you what.
Don't apologize, thanks, Al.
No, thank you.
Um, no, the only, the only, the biggest thing pressing that I would bring up, I feel like I have a couple, only one that's front of mind right now, is, and I don't know if maybe Bob, city manager, can follow up, a friend of mine was, um, lives in the neighborhood, I think the address is twenty-five thirty-seven, uh, South Cypress. And if you could have inspections and Daryl's team just be able to go out there, take a look, they have mattresses and garbage and vehicles that don't run all over their property.
Yes.
Um, and if you can just let us know, or just, if I can get an email of where...
Yep.
I think the city's aware, because I think they went out and shut off their water today, so...
Okay.
I'm not sure where it's at, but I would just appreciate a memo.
They shut off the water, they likely red-tagged.
That's kind of what I was wondering. So, yeah, if I can just be up.
Yep.
And then, um, on, what is it, Wednesday, is that Glen Avenue a public meeting? So, you guys remember, we'll be there.
Back-to-back with another meeting, though, isn't it?
It's at four o'clock, four to six, I'm not sure what, if there's something in the evening, I don't have it on my calendar.
I thought, I thought Jessica sent us an email saying we're...
I don't have anything on my...
There is one that's, there is one that's back-to-back, but I don't, I didn't think it was Glen, but I'm not sure. Anyway, that's all I got right now.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm the fourth.
So give plenty, what, what, what?
Uh, it, when, uh, oh, yeah, the SCPD Association meeting.
What is it?
Uh, Association meeting with the police. It was at seven that night.
What is?
The SCPD Association meeting is at seven PM, March fourth.
Police union.
Back-to-back, the police union.
Well, and Glen Ave is from four to six.
Six, so they're right behind each other, or that one's right behind it.
We'll get plenty of rest Wednesday night, come into the chambers Thursday morning.
Expect a letter from me, I hope by tomorrow, I'll be drafting and reading or writing it tonight.
You are? We, we have, we have our operating budget.
Some of your foolishness, I wanna at least do a counterpoint.
You're gonna put it in writing?
Absolutely, make it available to the press.
I just, I want you to come in rested Thursday morning, not grumpy, and that's all I have, we have operating budget, wrap up Thursday morning.
Make sure we follow up and give Keith a call.
We, I'll do that first thing tomorrow.
Thank you, I'll move with you in a second.
Bradken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Chaner?
Aye.
Dot?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.